And like I told you, this is the Kid's Subsons Editorial Board. We're talking with Bill Christensen, who's a writing candidate for the Port Orchard City Council at-large seat. What I'll probably do is just ask you to introduce yourself to us. And I think the thing we want to know is a little bit of your own background and then also why you chose to run. Your after the filing deadline when you announce this and tell us maybe the background of that too.
Yes, okay. Well, my name is Bill Christensen and I've lived here in Port Orchard for the last 28 years. I've lived downtown for over five years now. And I work in the shipyard, Puget Sound Naval Shipyard. And for the last five years, I just walk downhill from where I live and I pass Myrie's every day.
Pass what?
Myrie's, the former Myrie's Restaurant.
Wow, nice.
It's the bone of contention in, um, in Port Orchard right now. It's a dilapidated building and I've walked past it for many years thinking something was going to happen to it. And nothing has. It just has stayed in the same state it's been in. And I also sometimes come home from Annapolis and walk home from there. And I pass by Bay Street where they're planning on doing the walkway. And I remember seeing a sign that said, "Don't take my home, Port Orchard." There were, I believe, five property owners right there on the water that were facing eminent domain if they didn't want to sell their house. And so they were fighting it and some good things have happened from that. I'm a special projects manager at Puget Sound Naval Shipyard. I work for a company there called Employee Services. It's affiliated with the Navy. It's a civilian MWR entity. And what I do is I work with the general manager in expanding the business. Employee Services is the one that provides food, breakfast and lunch to pretty much everyone who works within the controlled industrial area at the shipyard. So we've been expanding. We have mini canteens, mobile trucks, a new espresso bus. I oversee a few espresso stands and a sandwich shop. And I work on additional projects for other canteens as far as assistant purchasing and marketing. And I moved here, as I said, 28 years ago or so. I used to live down, not downtown, but about five miles from downtown Port Orchard. And so I've driven through there, I imagine, over this time, almost 10,000 times. And you get to know the downtown that you drive through. And what really caught my eye and why I'm running now is that there's a holding company headed by a gentleman over in Seattle that has purchased the most coveted block in Port Orchard. It's the waterfront block between Frederick and Sidney. I think there's over six, seven, eight buildings there. He finally purchased this last one within the last, oh, a little over a year ago. And that's the Myrie's building. And so it's really dilapidated. It's a prime corner in Port Orchard. And everyone who drives through town comments on it. People who are passing by from out of town, you know, they think what's wrong with this town. You know, what's this dilapidated building there for? So I found out that what may be in the works is this gentleman and his holding company may like to redo, redevelop downtown Port Orchard into three to five-story buildings with condos and maybe office complexes. And it's going to totally alter what downtown Port Orchard is right now. It's a very community-oriented, family-friendly area. And the reason I'm running is to make sure that everyone is aware that this property is in play under possible development. And I just want to make sure that everyone knows and has an input into the decision on whether the city council members approve height adjustments. Because right now it's only zoned for up to 29 to 39 feet. And they'll have to go much higher to make it work out mathematically for a profit.
So do you, um, like you're saying, there's a couple of hoops they would have to jump through and/or that plan would have to become public for anything like a condo to happen? Or if Mr. Samport didn't intend to develop everything down there? Are you saying you're opposed to kind of the rumors that are out there right now? Or are you saying, "I just want people to know"? I mean, do you have an opinion of what would be best for downtown Port Orchard?
Right now, I am opposed to that. Three to five stories tall, I think is too high for our small town. Many people behind it would be blocked. I've seen developments before in other cities, Cape Harbor, Vancouver, Washington, where pretty soon, once you develop it that high and exclusive, expensive condos, you get a whole different feel from there. And downtown Port Orchard is really where people go on weekends. People that live in the community, they go down there. There's a waterfront. There's, through the summer, there's all kinds of events, car shows, boat shows, just seagull, seagull calling contests. There's something in there for everyone. And what I've seen in other places, even Sun Valley, is once you build these massive units, it discourages the regular residents from going down there because it's more like you're going into a residential area of someone else's.
And you live near this area? You just live uphill essentially?
Yes, I'm just a little five-minute walk, just like three or four blocks up from this area.
Is what you're expressing kind of what your neighborhood feels? Was that kind of part of the push you involved? I assume you're talking to people in your neighborhood?
Yes. Uh-huh. I've only found one person so far that thought condos may be fine. And he lives outside of the city limits. I walked downtown and talked to all the Bay Street merchants, well, a lot of them. And they're totally against it. A new development like that could possibly make their rents unaffordable. The new construction, all of a sudden, maybe there won't be any more $1,000 a month retail units available. They might bring in, who knows, a big change. I haven't seen any plans. But for this gentleman to make his project pan out, I have a feeling, and I think everyone expects, that it would become unaffordable for the main residents.
So if you don't approve of this, what do you think should happen to that area?
Well, it's been slowly developing over the last, ever since I got here. I've seen the changes in it. People modernize their buildings, redo the outsides. I'd like to see it stay the same. It is affordable. However, this one gentleman went ahead and bought the whole block. And he knew what zoning these buildings came with. And now he may be complaining that development won't work unless we give him higher building heights. And I don't know if the Myrie's building, the one that has, some people call it the Tyvek Hotel because it has Tyvek around and it's just been sitting like that.
For how long?
Well, it's been, this gentleman finally closed on it over a year ago, but it's been five or six years. They had a fire there years ago and then it went through. Of course, had to determine who really had legal custody of it. And so currently it's just Tyvek and like particle board siding. And there's pigeons there and it's boarded up. And the local community, for our 125th birthday, had to go down there and we put paper over the wood that was showing and put little picture frames on there to kind of like make our town-town appear more presentable.
Outside of that building, what's your opinion of basing it right now?
Everyone thinks that, oh, there's a lot of vacancies. Several of the vacancies are, this gentleman raised the rents on a few units down there.
The same guy?
Yes. Some people moved out because he was raising the rents. And then I heard the new tenants that were going to move in fell through. And so now he's stuck with an empty spot there where he was in charge of. Yeah, and then also Lally Mays, I think it was Lally Mays, right there. So she moved across the street and down a little bit. So.
Have you had a chance, have you ever had a chance to talk to him, Mr. Sam, before?
No. I just found out about this over the last month or so. And so I just started running. September 2nd is when I filed for this position.
That's why you filed as a write-in?
Yes.
Because you just found out what was going on?
Yes. And I've heard that other candidates have spoken with him. But yet he won't talk to the mayor regarding this building. We would all just like to, I know when I was at the 125th birthday party for Port Orchard a week ago, that we could get volunteers. There's been lots of talk of getting volunteers to just spuce it up, make it look nice if it's just going to sit there. However, I think this building may be used as leverage to.
Oh, to get what he wants?
Yes. Now, you know, he lives out of town and I never met him. I heard he's a very nice gentleman. However, he doesn't live here and doesn't drive by that every day. And is not approached by the local residents to say, you know, "Hey, can you do something about this building?"
But if, if it's true that it doesn't pencil out, how would you? I mean, you want something viable to go in there. How are you going to get that?
Well, he bought all these properties apparently knowing that what he had, he would have to go up for it to pencil out, is what everyone's been saying. He would have to get approvals and go vertical to make this thing a profitable venture. And so if zoning isn't changed, well, he can upgrade the current building as it is. He redid the marketplace downtown. It's a large open area place. Kind of like, it's on a small scale of Pike Street Market. There was a fish place in there, a meat place, a restaurant or two, ice cream place. So he has done some things there. I believe he, the corner building down on Frederick and Sidney, he is a pavilion so people can rent that out and for special events. So things are happening. It is workable. There's many ideas that could be tossed his ways to improving that building. But for the most part, it looks like a derelict building. And many people are looking into possible new ordinances to prevent these kind of buildings from hurting our town's image.
When you were introducing yourself, you mentioned you walked from Annapolis. And so you've seen the development of the pedestrian pathway that's kind of come out there. And the city's been able to get some money for that. Your comment was, you were seeing the signs when the, some of the homeowners were worried that their houses would be taken or they'd be forced to leave. But you said some good things have happened to that. And I just was curious, what do you meant by, what do you see as a good thing in that project?
Okay, well, the property owners did fight back and said, you know, "No, city or mayor, do not take my house." And so discussions ensued. And now it's my understanding that four of the people may still be selling their house, but one person may still be staying there. And they will put the path around that person's house. So it was a positive discussion between the two. It wasn't like the brute force of the city taking over someone's personal property rights. So I thought that was really positive.
The fact that there was a resolution?
Yes. And that the city should not be portrayed as, you know, a big bully, I'm feeling.
And then in your opinion, that was more important than the path itself and whatever the path. I mean, it could have spoiled the project or the.
Yeah, the process is really important. They're still not even close to getting down that way. But I'm glad that a resolution for most of those homeowners has come.
And you're in favor of actually completing the project, extending that out further? Do you think that's a good thing?
Yes, I do. There's many towns. Polespo has a long path that extends not only from the downtown but goes farther in, in front of some condos and apartments along the way. I used to live down in Vancouver, Washington, and they had a fabulous walkway along the Columbia River down there. Also in Tacoma, if you've ever been along the waterfront, people just love that. You can see them running, people pushing their kids in strollers, walking the dogs. It's just a fabulous place. So I'm all for walkways along the water, beach. I think it's really a positive area for the residents and visitors.
I realize it's only been a couple of weeks since you kind of announced your campaign. But have you been going to city council meetings? Have you been keeping up on things? Or how are you informing yourself of what this job would entail?
For the last month and a half, even before I decided to run, I had been going to several council meetings. So I've been learning the process and reviewing the paperwork. And I've seen people make comments there at city council. I'm kind of still learning, but local residents come in and give comments to the city council. And I'm wondering how they're heard because they just give their comments and the council hears them and that seems to be it. So I'm hoping to, as a council member, be able to return and respond and help whatever issues they bring before us.
What other things are maybe catching their attention as you do that? Like clearly downtown is your number one issue. Anything else that's grabbing you right now and saying, "I'd really like to learn more about that"? I'd like to, I see that as something that needs to be addressed?
Yeah, downtown, since I live so close to it, is really the heart of my issues with this. I've learned many other issues here. Roundabouts, years ago, when I first moved here, there was a roundabout, well, it's now by the bowling alley. And it didn't used to be there. And I'd go out into town and come up to it, to the stop sign there where you would turn off from Bethel onto Mile Hill or go downhill. And there'd always be car accidents there. I've seen a few of them. You've seen the glass, the parts of cars off the side of the road. And so I think that's why they finally put the roundabout in at that location. And it's been great ever since. It's expedites traffic. And so as far as these new roundabouts off on Sedwick, just off the highway, I've heard recently that during rush hour, sometimes cars get backed up onto the highway, which of course, you know, is a major safety issue. So if these roundabouts would expedite people off the highway on their way coming home, I would have to say if that's the least expensive or best solution, I would make that a priority.
So how are you going to campaign in such a, I mean, just?
Okay, yes, it is a short time. I only have a little over a month left. I do have signs and cards and I live downtown. And I'm going to start campaigning. I've spoken at one other forum and two more are coming up. I hope to get the word out. And people do have to write me in. It's going to be really difficult. It hasn't happened before in Washington State, I understand. It takes a lot of work. So mostly what I need to tell people is that I'm a writing candidate. You have to remember my name. It's Bill C. If you just even write Bill C., you don't have to spell out my whole last name and put it in the at-large position, in the blank, underneath my opponent.
Will you be in the voter's pamphlet?
No, I am not.
Okay.
It sounds like you want to be fair and balanced too, constituents that, you know, when they voice something, they want to be heard. Somebody said, sitting here, that, you know, it's all good until you realize that, you know, there's a political process and everything. Let's say you get in and those voices come in, but then you realize process. What is your strategy to still keep the same texture, you know, that you have? Is wanting to hear their voice and getting things done. What is your process to deal with? You know, because you're learning on the job.
Yes.
So what would be your process?
Well, I have been there before where the mayor has responded to people that brought up their issues. And if he didn't have an answer, I remember one time the sheriff was there and he asked the sheriff, because it had to deal with an issue about guns. Someone didn't get their guns back from after a year when their house was burglarized. And so he talked to the sheriff and said, "Hey, can we, let's do something about this." And so right then and there, he made the connection between the person who had the issue and the sheriff. And I'm hopeful that they worked it out. There are things, maybe it hasn't been done because it's difficult as far as setting up a way for, to respond to people's issues. You know, I want to hear them and bring them to the city council and say, "This is what these people have said." And many of the candidates running right now have voiced the same concerns. And what they want to do too is similar, is let's get together, hear everyone and make a decision from there. Let's let everyone be heard. I've heard that Facebook may not be, if you were a council member, you cannot post on there. I know it's a very popular media site. So I don't have the answers yet on how to get the word out other than email, respond by email, phone. And I'm willing to do that.
You've been, you've been watching council for a little while. Some of the things, some of the other we've talked about with Port Orchard, some of the races is a feeling of the council and the mayor not getting along very well. And I don't know if you've heard this or experienced it or seen that at all. So we've been asking everyone, what do you bring to that equation? If these relationships are going to improve, both sides can have their take on what their job is. I guess my two questions are, what is it, what do you feel that personally you bring to the council? Whether that's your career background, your personality, something like that. What do you, what do you see as your strengths for a group of people? And then the second is, what do you, just explain to me, what's a councilman's job in your opinion? What do you think you should do when you're?
Okay. It's exactly what you said. It's a combination of my personality and my current position at the shipyard. I work with several people in our company. We get together, we have menu board meetings. We talk about ways to solve problems and then we agree on a solution. And so fortunately, most of us are all agreeable with where I work. And I'm very open-minded. I'm thoughtful. Don't get angry. I like to come to a consensus. And all I can do is do the best I can to get people to work together. I get along well with people and I would expect they would respect what I have to say as well as they respect what I have to say.
And then explain, just from your own, everybody kind of says, "Here's what I think the council should do." How would you define that job? There's a lot of different things it can do.
Well, the council sets the policy. So I went to a council meeting recently and I got a big pamphlet on impact fees. So I read it thoroughly. I like to discuss the issues and find out what other, how other people see it and make the best decision possible for the citizens of Port Orchard and the community in the long term.
What's your, after reading through the impact fees information, how do you see that issue?
Well.
Is it a necessity?
Development, yeah, it's a necessity. And no one really likes to deal with new necessities because they cost something. However, impact fees only pay 32% of the actual development costs that are attributed to the development. So federal funds can pay another 50%, and still there's another 17% that has to come from somewhere else. So the impact fees that the engineers had told the council what those fees would be, yet they do sound expensive. However, what's the alternative? So I look forward to getting in there and see what the alternatives are. But right now, from what I see in the package, it sounds like it may be necessary.
So have you ever run for office? Ever been elected to office?
No, I didn't expect to do this at all until maybe a few more years. I do have a degree in business economics. I've used some of that over the years. A lot of this falls right into what I'm doing, you know, urban planning, finance. I have a couple of certificates in accounting, so I understand most of what's going on. I just need the facts and I think I can be really helpful to the other council members.
So let's see, the campaign, as you know, a short time. So on here, besides writing in candidate, and then I see the voice and choice, which I love, I love the card. What is the platform? Like what is it besides just downtown? Because as you know, that's one element of it. There's a bunch of stuff that the council deals with. What is the platform that you think will get, you know, people looking at you and saying, "You know what? I might just take that chance."
What separates you?
Exactly, that's what separates you from everybody.
Okay. Well, when I read this impact statement, there were two words in there that really stuck out. One was conservative and defensible. And that's how they described their results of coming up with this study. That the costs in here were not outrageous. They were appropriate and responsible. So I would like to think that the people would see me as caring about the community, being responsible with the taxpayers' money, looking out for their best interests and taking a conservative approach and keeping things in balance, trustworthy.
Can I ask you, since you live a few blocks from this guy that, you know, is development, would your view be blocked?
No, it wouldn't. I live up a steep, it's quite a steep hill, Sidney Avenue.
Okay, it is.
It's good exercise. A lot of people walk up there and they're huffing and puffing. And, you know, if I don't do it for a few days, I do too. But no, so I'm not blocked. However, it's my understanding that it may be the mayor and several others have talked to many of the nearby residents who were going to be blocked. And I don't know what the, what their feedback was to him. But that's a main concern. You don't want to take away a view from one group and let someone else sell it for a profit. It's kind of like eminent domain, taking away value from one person to support something else.
I'm sorry. With your emphasis on downtown, how do you get the folks from McCormick Woods interested in supporting you? And their way out there and their issues may be different than downtown, if you may question?
Yeah, that is a good question. McCormick Woods is a different type of area. And I believe the project downtown is supported by some people that live out in McCormick Woods. There's lots of land out there. No one's asked for a large, high-scale, high-rise condo development out there. This is the prime property. They have to remember that downtown Port Orchard, I mean, they're only 10 minutes away from a little drive downtown. And it's a seaport, a historic seaport for a long, long time. And to maintain the character of downtown, they do need to realize that a project like this may be inappropriate for this area. So hopefully, from different events that they come downtown to see, they'll realize that maybe development of that size hopefully is inappropriate.
What about some issues that might affect them, besides downtown issues?
Yeah. I know there are the impact fees. Those are important to McCormick Woods people out there. They can drive from there to Highway 16 and commute wherever. You know, Port Orchard is expanding and we're just one big community and we have to look out for each other. So we do have to take everyone's interests at heart. There is someone that lives out in McCormick Woods that's running for city council. I'm sure he'll be able, if he does get in, would be able to inform us of what's going out there. Otherwise, it's our duty. Otherwise, it's our duty as council members to be fully aware of what's happening in the whole community.
Have you gotten any endorsements?
I haven't gone out to get any endorsements. I was hoping to run this campaign fully financed by myself. I have two small donations and I'm not looking for more. My signs and cards are all ordered, I'm gonna be doing doorbelling. And I'm gonna take my chances with that. I don't want anyone to see me as connected with, you know, I used to be a realtor. I used to be an insurance agent. I don't want anyone to see me as if I get in, I'm gonna represent any special interests. So I'm just gonna leave it at that.
Well, thanks, Bill. Appreciate that. Actually, I should let you, any last, I'll give you a last statement, anything you wanna leave us with that we haven't asked you about?
Okay, well, again, I'd like to repeat that to get me elected for the Port Orchard City Council, you have to write me in, just Bill C., write it in in the right spot on the ballot. And then I can hear your voice and we can go from there. So thank you.
All right, thanks for coming.
Thank you.